It is 2:30. I hereby call to order the special meeting of the City Council of the City of Rowland, Florida. Sierra, could you please take the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Keith Keel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Barbara Gaines.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Jo Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Judith Pike.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Radzic.
Here.
City Manager Michael Hein.
Here.
Sergeant-at-Arms Lieutenant Anderson.
Here.
Deputy City Clerk Sierra Bender.
Here.
City Attorney Anita Garossi-Carver.
Here.
Thank you.
And we have a forum. We're here today for Resolution 2025-42, Preliminary Approval of the Recommended Non-Adverbal Assessment for Fire Protection and Rescue Services and the DENSCH Study from July 15, 2025. Somebody here to speak on behalf of that?
Good afternoon, this is Dr.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity to be here today. I have to tell you, I have to give great thanks to your appointed members that were on the Fire Assessment Committee, and I'd like to name them. Dr. Brandon Dixon, he's actually in California right now, but he is on the phone with us. He was the chairman, co-chair Ronald Ruff, he is in the office here. We have Elliot Wenderly, who's also a member, Chantelle Ocampo, also a member, and Torres Phillips. We had a real tight timeframe, but it really came together that last meeting. A lot of good work went into, a lot of great discussion. Everybody that was on the committee that was involved there, especially at the last meeting, really got the focus on what needed to be done and how to do this fairly and equally for all the different businesses, non-residential and residential homes here in the city of Rowland. So we're extremely grateful for the work that they did and the donation of their time to be part of this committee. In saying that, at this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Brandon Dixon. He was the chairman, and let him speak on behalf of the committee. Dr. Brandon, are you there?
Good afternoon, I am here. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. And I'm not sure, is there a video feed available? Are you able to see me? It's nice for you guys. Better option? If not, I can't hear anybody if someone's saying anything. I can hear you. You're bored. So, I think you guys can see me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I can't see you, so I trust I look good. You all look good, I'm sure you do. But good morning, good afternoon. My name is Dr. Brandon Dixon. I thank the mayor, vice mayor, city council staff, and community residents that may be there. I appreciate this opportunity to come forward and talk about the Fire Assessment Committee, the great work that we've done. As stated, I have had the privilege of serving as a fire, as the chair of the Fire Assessment Committee. I come to you not only as a policy contributor, but as a neighbor and a fellow Rowland resident, who, like each of you, will be directly affected by the decisions made. This committee was tasked with examining the fires, the city's fire rescue assessment methodology, and rates for fiscal year 2026 beyond and until the next fire assessment committee is convened. The recommendations we have arrived at came through rigorous evaluations and is grounded in fiscal responsibility, operational necessity, and most critically, proportionality. As a doctor of administration, I approach this process with both analytical rigor and personal accountability. Our charge was clear: develop a long-range, data-informed solution that preserves our fire rescue service quality while ensuring funding model, ensuring the funding model was proportionate, fair, and sustainable. The current framework, while well-meaning, has become outdated. For example, residential properties were capped at 2,500 square feet. That means 4,000 or 5,000 square-foot homes can be the same fire assessment as one nearly half of its size. Commercial and industrial properties face a similar cap of 50,000 square feet, despite some structures now exceeding 250,000 square feet and requiring specialized resources like ladder trucks. The result: a disproportionate burden placed on smaller homeowners and smaller local businesses. These are those least equipped to absorb that impact. Under the leadership as chair, the committee, consultants, and city engage in a comprehensive, data-driven evaluation, which included the reviewing, emergency response, resource utilization, availability, the readiness factor, square footage-based risk alignment, and parcels. After careful review, the committees, this committee recommends the following assessment for the framework for fiscal year 2026 and until the next committee can meet. This methodology includes a combined approach that blends resource utilization, availability, and expands tiers up and down, which currently does not exist. Residential, commercial, industrial, warehouse, institutional, and vacant land use. Tables are reflected in an appendix for tables 12, tables 13, tables 14, tables 15, tables 16. Note, these references in the table are in the appendix of this memo and can be found within the City of Rowland's Fire Rescue Assessment Study, I believe which has the date of July 25, 2025, in its full form. The recommendation reflects the real cost of fire service coverage and aligns the contributions with usage across all property types. This framework ensures consistency, fairness, and risk-aligned funding across the parcel types, accounting for real costs and maintaining Rowland's fire rescue capabilities. The residential model introduces 11 square footage tiers. The majority of Rowland's homes fall into the mid-tier, between 1,000 and 2,000, between 1,000 and 2,500 square feet, and will see adjustments. Larger homes may have increased risk and resource demand will contribute accordingly. Commercial and industrial properties will benefit from the update as well. Many small businesses will see stable or even reduced rates. But larger facilities, those over 50,000 square feet, will no longer pay as if they were 50,000 square feet. These recalibrations correct the imbalance and relieve the burden on smaller organizations. This committee strongly encourages the city, the city and the council, to carefully review two separate issues: economic hardship and institutional discounts. The committee recommends expansion and promotion of the Economic Harship Program, including a full review of eligibility criteria and increased outreach so socially-economically disadvantaged residents can truly benefit. This may include the city to expand, fund, and effectively communicate the economic hardship program to residents, especially socially-economically disadvantaged and underserved groups. For example, you may want to look at auditing and streamlining eligibility requirements to eliminate unnecessary barriers, increase funding to match the community's need, launch a targeted outreach campaign to improve awareness, trust, and participation. The second issue: reexamine the institutional discount policy or resolution. Ensure a clear understanding of how spaces like gymnasiums, classrooms, and sanctuaries are addressed. Currently, institutional properties such as churches and schools do receive a discount. While their mission is deeply valued, these businesses or buildings also require coverage and can occupy substantial space. It is essential to note, any revenue not collected through this exemption is currently subsidized by the city's general fund, shifting the cost burden onto other taxpayers. The committee's recommendation transfers, the committee's recommendation transitioning to the proposed fee schedule for the implementation of this fee assessment. Fairness, consistency, and reducing the fitness in the general fund subsidy should be considered. Nonetheless, we believe the city should evaluate this resolution to determine how the current discount is best served and implemented as its fee fits. To continue the discount without full financial impact analysis, our site would be short-sighted. We recommend an administrative review of the incitational spaces and how they are assessed and how the discount is applied, if at all. The recommendation is not about raising fees, it's about modernizing our system so those who benefit contribute proportionally. The Fire Assessment Committee has completed its work. We also feel it's important that we frame this larger conversation around fairness, funding sustainability, and how, excuse me, and now the responsibility is before this council. As chair and as resident, I respectfully urge you to adopt the recommendation. The recommendation is before you. Implementation, along with the decision about hardship accessibility and institutional exemptions, now rests at your hand. We urge you to move forward thoughtfully, strategically, and with full awareness of downstream impacts on our community. I thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration. I now believe a consultant may provide insight related to the actual fee schedule.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Neil Green Camp would vanish. The presentation starts with a brief background review and then continues with the technical study findings and the next steps. Fire assessments are a type of non-adverbal special assessment to fund the capital and operating costs associated with providing fire protection and first responder services. They are very common in Florida. They've been upheld by courts and also courts found multiple methodologies to be acceptable and valid. Rowland Fire Department provides fire protection and EMS services to the city within 27 square miles out of three stations. The assessment program was initially implemented in '22, and this year's study updates all the variables as well as explores methodology options. As already discussed, the city appointed a fire assessment committee, and this results that I'm presenting today incorporates their recommendations. So in terms of the methodology, the fire assessments by law need to establish benefit to property and also reasonable allocation of cost. When we are determining the portion of the cost, fire department's budget that can be recouped for a assessment, we review the type of incidents that they are responding. So case law requires that costs related to advanced life support cannot be funded with fire assessment, so we are basically isolating that and only charging for fire protection and first response. And then once that budget is determined, the allocation of that budget among land uses incorporates two components. One is the readiness factor, the availability, and the others is resource utilization. Accountations have really four main components: the budget, distribution of that budget to land users, and then the units that we get from the property appraiser, and finally the rates. So again, assessable budget measures the portion of the budget that can be funded with a fire assessment program. And by reviewing the incidents over the past eight years and looking at total resources used at each incident, we determine that approximately half of that, the incident efforts are associated with ALS and remaining is non-ALS. Okay, so the fire department's total budget, requested budget, is almost $7 million. From that, again, we remove any ALS, 100% ALS expenses. Those that are combined are separated based on that 50% ratio. Any dedicated revenues were subtracted, and then the assessment program-related expenses are added. So then out of that, out of that $7 million, about 3.87 million is, can be funded with a fire assessment program. So the current rates are based on a assessable budget of $2.4 million, so that's an increase of almost 60%. So that just says that if nothing else changes, rates will go up about 60%. And evaluating the demand, we reviewed eight years of incident data and multiple variables, not just frequency, but also how many personnel was at the site at each incident, how many vehicles, and how long each incident was. Again, any incidents related to ALS were excluded. So that provided a distribution that's in the red box, the current updated distribution. And you can see that almost 77% of the resources are being utilized by residential properties, and then the rest is, among other ones. This chart also shows you the changes since the last study. Again, that explains some of the differences in the rates. And in the case of land use categories that has a small base, even a 1% increase ends up being a high percent change, so that just has a bigger impact. Sorry, just, even I'm not pointing to the, there we go. We then take those resource distribution and multiply that with the assessable budget to allocate that budget among different land uses. In terms of the units, that information comes from the property appraiser, and you can see that there has, since compared to '22, there are about 20% more residential units, significantly more square footage in the industrial category. And if, as we have more units, the cost per unit obviously goes down because it's the cost being distributed among a larger supply of units. So in the case of residential rates, we take 70% of the budget and distribute it equally among units. That reflects the readiness factor or the availability of the department, and then 30% is distributed based on the incident data and the size of the properties. The reason we allocate 70% as a readiness factor is because the industry research shows that any station that's active more than 30% of the time starts having problems in terms of fatigue, inability to address concurrent events, lack of training. So they are not supposed to be more than 30% utilized, and then the rest of the time they are ready. And any property that doesn't even ever call the department still benefits from that availability in terms of insurance reductions, property values, safety, and so forth. So in the residential category, one of the recommendations of the committee was that to move from current five square footage tiers to 11 tiers. Must be a magic spot that I'm supposed to point. Okay. So you can kind of see, this chart shows the current rates compared to the calculated rates. So currently, the range is from 225 to about 320 in the high end. So the low end was starting at 1,000, so that got split into two categories, and then the high end was capped at 2,500, so now it's expanded to 5,000. So the new rates range from $260 to about $532. On the, sorry, I'm almost going to skip that slide, this is so hard to get to. On the non-residential, we use a similar approach. We also take 70% of the budget and distribute equally among all the square footage and 30% based on their actual utilization of the resources. In the commercial also, the tiers were expanded. In the prior study, we're stopping around 50,000 square feet. Now this schedule goes all the way to 750,000. So you can kind of see some example categories here. So for the lower categories, lower square footage categories, the rates are decreasing despite the budget increase and so forth. And then in the case of commercial, as of 90,000 and up, they are starting to see some level of increase. And there are only two parcels that are experiencing increase in the commercial category. In the industrial, same type of thing. At around 120,000 square foot, they start seeing some level of increase, and there are about maybe eight to 10 prop parcels that are experiencing. Institutional, all of the tiers experience an increase just because at this point, right now, the city is buying them down, down to 25%. And then vacant land is calculated on a per parcel basis, so that's going from about $34 to $130. That's a combination of both budget increase and also the more resources being allocated to vacant land compared to the last study time period. In terms of next steps, I had some dates here, so I need that slide. Thank you. Maybe you should stay here. So today, I think your staff is looking for the approval of preliminary resolution. That's just for the purposes of mailing out first-class notices. That needs to be done 20 days before the official adoption. That just means that the rates cannot go up any higher than what's in the resolution, but they can always be decreased at the adoption. And then we are targeting August 11 or earlier, hopefully earlier, the mailing of first-class notices, and then September 2 is the adoption hearing. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I have actually, probably two. I know we talked about this when I met with Chief Carroll, but the economic hardship program and Dr. Dixon mentioned it could be expanded to others. Could you expand on that just a little bit more? Oh, sorry, Chief Carroll.
Vice Mayor and council members, as far as the hardship program, as far as expanded, I think what Dr. Dixon was saying is for council to maybe consider maybe that $25,000 that was set aside for that, maybe increasing that amount. In saying that, the other recommendation from the fire assessment committee was to really get the messaging and good communications out. And several of council members have, mentioned that to us and we took that very seriously. And I'm happy to go over some of that, what we've come up with, if you like. And so myself, Acting City Manager Tim Maslow at the time, our Communications Director as well as our Finance Director is input as well. And what we decided is that in working with our consultant, the matter will be going out. Well, that matter is not cheap. It's close to $17,000 to send out a first-class mailing to every business owner, resident property owner within the city of Roval. There was an opportunity here for us to add content onto that letter as well. There was some space reserved for us where we could add that. So how do we get the message out to folks? Because Mr. Ruff, who's in the audience here and our co-chair for the committee, will tell you that some of his people in his neighborhood, he had to actually assist them. They weren't aware of it. He brought it to their attention and he actually had to assist them. So in taking what council members, Mayor, Vice Mayor brought to our attention and others, we come up with this. That that messaging, that everybody will get to their home, will tell them about the economic hardship program. So every single person will get this in the mail, whether you're in a 5,000, 10,000 square foot house or whether you're in a 500 square foot house. That's number one. Number two is that it will give you all the information and guidelines, because this does follow HUD. These are federal guidelines, what would actually meet the criteria to approve for this. So that information would be on the mail out. Number three here would be, there would be a link where if you had accessibility via your phone, computer or otherwise, where you could download the form and you could fill it out, fantastic. But in the event you cannot do that, my secretary, you all know Kristi Higgin, wonderful, she's actually in charge of the fire department, keeps us online. Kristi will be keep, there's going to be a phone number. Kristi will keep an Excel spreadsheet. She will then let myself, my deputy chief, or whoever happens to be in the office at that time, we will come to you. We will hand-deliver you the form. We will assist you in filling out that form. We've also invoked the help of Ms. Linda over at the Elise Tomlin Center. Her and her staff said they would absolutely be willing to help out anybody who needed assistance. And we are also, Communication Director Jen, also looking at the local churches to set up and send forms, forms to, set the forms there where people could write the form and see if they qualify, because qualifying information would be on that form as well. And again, they can call. We will assist you, filling out the form, helping you get that information together. I'll drive right over myself with whatever it takes to help out the citizens of our community. We're going to do that. And I hope that does satisfy, along with all the social media stuff and city website, fire department websites, wherever else we can post it and get it out there. But really, I think the people most affected are the people who, and there are a substantial number of them, that don't have TVs or internet or have computers or those kind of things. So we will assist you. We will come to you. I hope that helps answer.
Thank you very much. I have one last question, and actually it would be for you, Chief Carroll. I want to thank you for, when we met, ramping this up so quickly so I could kind of get my arms around it. But do you feel the expanded tiers and methodology are more proportionately fair? One question, or maybe it's a combined question. For the nonresources that may need to respond to residential and non-residential structures, do you feel that it's fair and equal?
Absolutely. When it comes to residential, yes. And when it comes to non-residential, meaning industrial, commercial, institutional, absolutely. Because there's no doubt the bigger the structure, the potential more resources, equipment and time and manpower. So there's a lot of factors that go in potentially that the bigger the structure. So without a doubt, I think the fire assessment was tasked with coming up with something proportionally fair and I believe they did a great job.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Didn't really expect you to say anything other than you thought it was fair since you were part of it. So that was a question that was, would have been interesting if you would have said no. So there's other cities that have done fire assessments. Do they follow the same 70% and/or five to 11 tiers?
So historically, most studies were using only the incident data. And in 2015, there was a court case that, and it went all the way to Florida Supreme Court, and it approved the use of availability reduction and insurance premiums and property values as acceptable means of measuring benefit to property. Since that study, we are seeing more and more of this combination. Because when you do just incident, it really doesn't capture that whole benefit of, again, the fact that your insurances are, you are able to get an insurance to begin with. And then that insurance premiums are lower with that service. So the money stays in the community and instead invested into the fire services.
So I noticed that we had quite a bit of an increase in industrial, 280% or something like that?
For the larger size categories, right? After like 120,000, so there are about 55 parcels that are industrial and I think about maybe 10 of them, eight or 10 of them are experiencing an increase.
So over the last 20 years, one of the things that have constantly has come up is the over-reliance on residential properties with regards to our mileage rate or otherwise. And here we got 72% of the fire assessment fees going towards residential. So I would have thought with commercial and new industrial, that the reliance on residential would not have been to the tune of $2.9 million. So, so how do I go out and explain to my residents that we've got more houses, I got more commercial, but yet someone who's got a house that's, you know, between 17 and 1900 square foot is going to get a 20% increase? How do I explain that to somebody?
So all that growth is resulting in a need for more resources. So for one, the fire department's starting budget, it has to be higher just to be able to accommodate that. So as you saw, just budget itself compared to last study, increase about 60% that we are using. So it's the need for more resources and also a better way of capturing the full benefit that larger home is receiving. Larger homes are more valuable, their insurance rates are higher. So they are, their savings are higher than compared to a smaller home. So it's capturing that differential. Yes. So, so one factor is the budget, right? As you get more, your population increases, you have more units, more people, the fire department needs more resources. So if nothing else happens, everybody's fee would increase about 60% if we didn't change anything else. In addition, a larger home has a higher value. So when you are protecting a home from a fire or so on, their benefit is more than a smaller home. Their insurance premiums are higher, so their savings is more when, when they, because of the availability of the fire department, your insurance premiums are reduced. So all that benefit is being better captured with that distribution.
So are we saying because someone has a 5,000 square foot home, it's larger than someone who's got a 2,000 square foot home, so they actually have more opportunities for fire to break out? Is that?
No. We are just saying that the value of that home is more. A 5,000 square foot home is maybe 500,000, 200. So what's being protected, property value is more. And as well as the insurance premium reduction is more, because the total insurance amount is more.
Okay. What changed in the methodology from this time around to 2022? What changed?
Really, the primary change is addition of the more categories.
Is that it? Not in regards to the compilation of the data or anything else like that?
No.
So the old, it was 11 tiers?
Yes.
Well, six more tiers. And if you don't adopt the 3.8, almost 3.9 million dollars, Mr. Hind, that would mean that more money would have to come out of the general fund if you don't adopt the 3.9 million.
That's correct.
Just to be clear, the residential portion is determined statutorily, like the percentage that has to be billed to residents. That's all statutory. Like we can't manipulate that data in any way. Is that correct?
I mean, the study methodology, when you say, it's, okay, so-
The numbers are what they are.
Yes, yes.
We can't, we can't- We're using different words and saying the same thing.
Sorry.
Okay, good. Okay. Um, I did have a question on the commercial, industrial. Can we go back? I think it's slide 18. Can you look at that for just a second?
It will take me three hours, probably. I'm not able to work this thing.
It's supposed to be easy for-
It's easy to do.
Oh, one more. So slide 18.
Slide 18, one, I think one before that. Oh, shoot, my lip is bleeding. Slide 18.
This one, right. Thank you. Um, so it goes from 999,000 square feet straight to 750,000 square feet.
No.
There's tiers missing, correct?
Right. These are just example tiers. Because we couldn't fit them in.
Fit everything.
I don't know if you have the report in the-
I do have the whole report also.
Okay. You'll be able to see it there.
Okay. And then as far as the economic hardships, would, I guess that's Chief Carroll, would it be possible to target community partners such as WIC offices, our health senate, like health, I'm trying, what are they? The health office down here, food stamp, like residents who receive food stamps, VA office, all of those things. Is that possible?
Neighborhood center, yes, ma'am. I sit on the board for neighborhood center. If any, any added information or help, we'll take it. But we plan on, that's, that's great. Thank you for that information. But neighborhood centers, when I thought of, we had a board meeting last night, was leaving forms there as well. And they would be able to call us and we'll go to them. Now, the only problem with that is not everybody that uses say that neighborhood center is in Roval. Some are outside.
Right.
Wouldn't apply to them, so they wouldn't grab the-
Absolutely. Okay. I think I've got it. Thank you.
My questions are for Communications. Jenny, can you come up? When I had the meeting this week, I was rather discouraged to know that there was $25,000 in the budget for this. And up until the time that it closed, I believe that it was $9,000 that had been used. So we did talk about different ways of getting this idea out. One of the ways, as Jesus mentioned, was through the churches. I would like to know what your plan is to get it to the churches and have designated parishioners in there, help other people. And I can also see this as possibly some nonprofit taking this training and using it and then charging people for it. You know, for $20, I hope you fill this out. But more, my question is really more on what steps is Communications going to take not only to disseminate this information to churches, but how are you going to train the people in the various churches to help with this?
Sure. I might need some assistance on training people to help with this, is that's more of a financial thing, but-
I apologize.
Sure.
Only I'm more familiar with the form if I may. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So the form is not real difficult. It's, it's about five or six questions and then there's some information, tax information and everything that needs to be filled out. But again, I think as far as the churches go, we'll be setting up meetings to actually meet with the pastors or senior leadership with the church. It's really going to be up to them whether they decide who they're going to maybe assign or maybe, or which office staff that they may designate. And we will work with them. But if they're not able to, ma'am, I can assure you, myself and my staff, we will reach out to them. All they got to do is call that number and we will reach out to them and help in any way, shape or form we can.
Perhaps I ask the wrong question and I apologize. How will the churches know that this offering is going to be available to them so that they can assist their parishioners?
And we're going to leave a stack of forms. We're going to speak with the office, the administrative staff, pastors and so on of the churches. We're also going to leave them a stack which gives the qualifying requirements to qualify for this. But they can leave it on their desk or in an area where they, you know, have other things that people can grab. And they can even mention it at their services. We'll certainly encourage them to speak about it. Maybe towards the end of the service, you know, sometimes they will say, hey, if any of you, you know, are considering this, we have forms, we have applications that are on the desk out in the lobby, so on and so forth. There's only so much we're going to be able to do to actually get it enhanced. But I believe that is going to be the best approach is towards the senior leadership, pastors of the churches, leave stacks of these forms for them to put in the appropriate areas within their church and to speak about it. And we'll come speak about it if necessary at a service.
And I understand that, I know you guys are miracle workers. So I fully understand that. I was just trying to expand on perhaps how a methodology could be used. While I fully understand that we as a city cannot eliminate, for the lack of a better word, the risk as it comes to utilizing these funds. I just think that perhaps none of us is as smart as all of us. And if we can team together to come up with even more expansive ways to get out there to the public. Because when you look at the open period versus the closed period, you got 25K, you use nine. And there probably are many in the, in the community now that could use this, especially in these trying economic times. So thank you.
Okay, just a few questions. I know that in our meetings, there are some follow-up questions that I don't think are applicable here about how we get to the number, the 6.9 million dollar number and the metrics to measure the impact. But the one thing that I'd, I'd like to understand clearly is how you're going to divide up or can you divide up institutional? Say a church has a sanctuary, say a church has a gymnasium, say a church has a health club, say another church, you know, has an educational building that's used for catering as well. I mean, how, how does that, are they all linked together or are each one of those facilities looked at in a different way for a different fee?
Yes. The property appraiser database and how they classify it, and they have Department of Revenue Code, so- of Revenue Code, so we can check if they are splitting that square footage. I don't think so, but we'll double check.
Because, and I ask that because I think, you know, my memory is, I'm getting hold this, is if you took each building individually, the square footage, it came out to be less than if you went to the big number at the bottom where they were all added together?
Mayor, not to speak, but if I'm correct, it's, what she's referring to is how they get their information is based on what's reported at the property appraiser. To go beyond that, it would require your approval to say, when it comes to institutional, correct me if I'm wrong, we will apply the, whatever the discount currently this year and the last couple of years, it's been 75%. We will apply 75% to the sanctuary or any other areas you decide to be, that fall into that category, and then if they have a school or a gymnasium or something like that, then that would not apply. Because if you just go and apply 75% across the board to institutional, what's going to happen when a hospital moves in downtown? That falls under institutional. Certainly, that's not, you know, a place that...
Yeah, and that's what I get confused, and I think it's going to need a lot, because there's daycare centers too. I go to a lot of churches that are used for daycare during the weekday, and how are we going to have a definition that we can use consistently? Because what we're going to get into issues is when we have inconsistency and how people are being...
Well, I think it first starts, Mayor, with the fact that you, as a council, would have to determine if that's the direction you want to go. I don't know that we have the timeframe that this go around, that it may be something we have to do later, but what would need to happen then is we would actually have to go out to these 20? 20 facilities? 27 facilities, thank you. And depending on if they were almost a mixed use, we would have to determine the square footage for each one. And, for instance, I'll tell you where I came from in my previous life. We had a rehabilitation center, a part of it that had 24-hour nursing care was billed under institutional, and then there was administrative office and classroom portion of it that was billed as commercial. So the same building, this square footage, let's call it 100,000 square feet, this 20,000 square feet was billed as commercial, this 80,000 square feet was billed as institutional. It required our fire marshal to go out there with a wheel and he'd measure off the sections. Am I speaking appropriately? Okay.
So we need to have a, you know, for legal reasons, we need to have a consistent approach and a sort of a consistent database. So we usually, and pretty much all fire assessments, rely on property appraiser database. Now, like Chief explained, when you have sort of a mix, either policy or the buildings, then that requires additional research for this, again, in a way that all buildings are treated the same way. And then basically what you are doing, you are developing your own property database at that point for fire assessment purposes.
It is important to realize that every penny that you do not bring in through the, what the fire assessment committee has set forth in the institutional section, or any other section for that matter, then falls back onto the general fund, has to make up because it's across all those categories. And Council Ratzek, to answer your question, because 76-ish percent of the resources go to residential, overall throughout the data that was extrapolated, my deputy chief, God bless him, cannot tell you the hours he put into extrapolating this data, he's absolutely amazing, 76% of the accessible funds for the fire assessment therefore have to come from residential. Just like 8% I think comes from commercial, 3% from industrial, and so on. You can only bring in that percentage from those categories. Does that help answer your question, Commissioner? Yes, sir.
Somebody tell me, I mean, I'm sure that we've covered it, where does grade middle school fall?
Is that a public school? They are not, they are exempt. State and federal property schools are exempt from a fire assessment.
Yeah, we don't have to make it up from the general fund, so there's just not even, it's a consistency issue, I think. Okay.
I have one question for Mr. Heinz, if I can ask. Three years ago, we adopted $40,000, if I'm not mistaken, for a hardship number, and it went down based on the fact that we didn't have, did it go down to 25, or did we set it at 25? What was the actual amount of dollars in 2022 that was used?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Ratzek, I don't have the number of what was utilized in 2022 in regard to actual, but it was reduced based on utilization percentages. And I think the point is well taken that if the council, and again, as I understand it and completely support the great work that the committee did, you're adopting their recommendations today, and two of those recommendations are that we come back with a program for outreach, and we also relook at that 3.2% attributed to institutional and how we work with that. There's only one pre-existing agreement with an institution, and that's related to an easement provided for the cemetery where the city has agreed to absorb that cost, which would be borne by the general fund. But it was completely discretionary and legislative in regard to how much you appropriate for a hardship program. And obviously, with a more robust public outreach effort, you would anticipate a greater utilization, especially if there's an increase that is well-publicized.
So I pulled numbers out of the sky. I almost said something else. We haven't really set an amount for the hardship yet, it's probably going to be part of the budget, but let's just say that we went for 40,000. And if, again, I just pulled these numbers out of nowhere, and let's just say that it was $250 of hardship per house, that means there's about 160 different properties. So I guess as we go a little bit further along, are we going to set this based on how much it's an average, or is this going to be a total of 40,000, 50,000, and we're going to eat away at it? If we get down to zero, if we have the capacity, we'll do what we said we were going to do three years ago, which is we'll add to it based on the need?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Ratzek, I would anticipate that it would be reasonable for the council, if this is adopted, to have us look at it in mid-year. I would expect that staff will come forward with a recommendation that'll be higher than the 25,000 to begin with, and we can always revisit to see how the utilization is. And again, those applications, if I recall, come, we had a deadline, but we showed great grace in extending those deadlines as much as possible and give deferences whenever we can. But that comes early in the year, of course, when the tax bills come out.
And I recognize that the fact we only used 25 out of 40 was because of the communications, present staff accepted, and again, just marketing the whole program, so that's probably one of the reasons why we didn't max out, but that's all.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can, the crack chief, of course, provided me numbers, we had 56 applicants in '23, 47 in '24, and only 21. Part of it is eligibility, and again, we've made it as convenient as possible following federal guidelines, but we can always recalibrate if the council feels necessary.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor.
I don't know if this question goes to Anita, but if it doesn't, you can tell me what I need to do. How do I ask that if we looked at with the nonprofits combined with profits, i.e. a church that has a daycare combination or something thereof, when or how do I make a suggestion that the square footage be separated out? Because in awareness to the public, yes, we have a nonprofit, we're here to help you with your groceries, or we're here to help you as a church. By the same token, we are making money on our daycare, our cooking school, or whatever. When and how do I get that across?
So I think you can bring that up now and get a consensus, but I think if I understood Vinesh, their study would have to take that into account, so it could not be ready for this fire assessment study.
Okay, so I get it for now this time, but there's going to be a next time. So how do I get this on the record that going forth, not counting this year, but going forth, that this is automatic? How do I get that put on the record?
Yeah. Anita.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, perhaps I can address that, because it might be more art than craft. If the council supports the recommendations from the committee, again, one of the recommendations is that we come back with a way to deal more equitably with the institution groups, recognizing that that is a general fund contribution. You approve that process. So as I recall, the steps are, you approve the resolution, we mail out the notices, you'll hear from institutional groups, churches, nonprofits, they'll come to the council, you'll probably direct us to come back with a policy. If you recall, the previous policy suggested that we ask them to report on the public benefit that they provide to the citizens of Groveland, whether through acts, deeds, support, food giveaways, community meetings. And I anticipate that we'll have a more refined and exacting recommendation for you on the implementation on those hardship programs for the institutional classification. In other words, that'll come back to you, and I anticipate that you'll say, well, this is a profit center, or this is, and we can have those discussions to make sure we can adopt that for our policies. So I think, Vice Mayor, you're very clear on record.
Just before we call a question, do we be able to get a format of the rollout, like neighborhood huddles and the time, because we're going to need to have it pretty quick the way the next vote is in September?
Chief, can you pull up the last slide, or prime ultimate slide, which went through key dates? Yes, so you'll see that the notices will go out in August, but you'll have a hearing on September 2nd. At that hearing, I would anticipate that there'll be some staff recommendations and questions about exactly what you're asking about.
But you know, is there any way we can lead up to it? There may be a lot of information that's not quite correct that'll get out based on just, you know, bits and pieces. Is there any way that we could get with the different neighborhoods, or so before? All that, so we're controlling narratives, that's all. I'm just wanting to make sure we're controlling the narrative rather than other groups.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we can certainly, there are a couple of issues there. One is we can certainly work with Jen in Communications on a schedule, talking points that you individually, or we can do structured huddles. Obviously, social media, as was mentioned, in the actual mailer, there'll be language regarding hardship program and more amplification of that message. And certainly, I think it can be an iterative process where you solicit feedback from some of those institutional classifications about what they think is equitable.
Because the rollout would be, we'd be talking about this, we'd be talking about the millage rate proposal, we'd be talking about the 10% increase on the water, you know, how that, and what the next one's going to be. So the quicker we can kind of figure that out, I think it'll save a lot of heartache if we can get ahead of it.
Could this be a paid huddle? A paid huddle, meaning could we have huddles in District 1, 2, 3, 4, where the Chiefs, Communications, and all could be there? That's what I mean by paid huddle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, certainly you can work with me, and I can figure out staff resources and timing. You know, to the mayor's point, that is a fairly condensed schedule. So the question is, do you want it before August 11th, which is unlikely, if the, when the mailer goes out prior to the hearing between the...
11th and the 2nd is critical, yeah.
Thank you.
If we wait till after the 2nd, I'm afraid everybody said we just ran it through. I mean, that's what always, oh, they just did it, you know, and didn't get any feedback, you know, that's all.
Mr. Mayor, I think one of the things to mitigate would be to extend the application deadline, so if people don't necessarily get the information out and they maybe have till January, I mean, I know that, you know, it's already going to have been collected, so we're going to have to rebate it out.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Ratzek, if I recall, while there was a lot of discussion during the actual hearings, there was a second wave of conversation and questions when people got their bills in the first quarter of the year. And I think we'll have to do another readdressing and communication at that point as well.
Very good. With seeing any other questions? Okay, your resolution 2025-42, I need a motion.
I make a motion to accept resolution 2025-42.
A second.
And Sierra, read the title, please.
Yes, Sierra, please read the title, thank you.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Groveland, Florida, relating to fire protection and rescue services and non-avalanche assessments to provide for such services, preliminarily approving a revised methodology for the levy of the fire protection and rescue non-avalanche assessments for all non-exempt specially benefited property in the city of Groveland, preliminary determining that the methodology and assessment rates for all classes of non-exempt specially benefited properties in Groveland recommended by the Vinesh study dated July 15, 2025 constitute legally valid fire protection and rescue assessments, preliminarily approving the recommended non-avalanche assessments by the Vinesh study for the purposes of providing notice, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Now I'll take a motion.
I motion to accept resolution 2025-42.
A second.
Motion and a second. Sierra, could you call the roll, please?
Well, questions from the public.
How about questions from the council?
I'm not sure, Mr. Heinz, if motion was inclusive of what we were looking to do, which included the institutional, so maybe we can get that clarified?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Ratzek, I think that's very clear. The chair did a fantastic job of emphasizing those two additional recommendations, and we certainly, as staff, heard those and understood council's direction, so I think it's clear for direction.
Just wanted to make sure that it was clear.
Thank you.
Top of the comment, Ronald Ruff.
Mr. Mayor, council, I was co-chair on the commission, and to give you a little background, I've been working on this since '22, and then I was on the first commission that absolutely failed because it got canceled and canceled and canceled six times, and we ran out of time. My experience, I'm a specialist in statistics. I had, at Wharton School, I had the guy who wrote the book, Morris Hamburg. I worked with the tax systems in Waterbury, Connecticut. And of course, I've been very involved, and I understand methodology, especially where it comes to... involved, and I understand methodology, especially where it comes to the methodology of being fair, okay? The first meeting that I attended, we talked about improvements, we talked about definitions, we brought up, I brought up a first square foot model, which is based on the square footage of the property versus the 8,800 homes divided into 2.4 million and starting with that basis of the $235 that everyone pays, okay? At the second meeting, I, the meeting was going along, what happened at the second meeting is we finally voted on the residential, and it was an even, it was a tie. It was not one side or the other. I basically, being the timeframe and everything else, I decided to eat pro, and I went with, you know, because we had to make a decision, okay? You know, so, you know, I met, but what happened during the meeting really upset me. And it came apparent at the meeting that there was a meeting with the mayor, and the consultants, and the chief, and the chairman, and I'm the expert, I consider myself on this commission, I was the expert, and I am the expert, okay? And I was a part of that meeting to describe the per-square-foot reality of how its statistically stands and the fairness of it. So basically, you know, like I said, it was a tie vote, and I went forward. So basically, I said, okay, you have 8,800 homes, you divide it into 2.4 million, and you come out with a $235 that everyone pays, okay? Great situation, you know, it's easy. The consultants actually, go back a second, breaking the tiers out was one of the things from the beginning, from 1922, from 19, 2022, I'm giving my age away, 2022, is, I saw that as extremely terrible. I mean, it gave the, as I asked her to repeat it, the bigger homes, which are the more expensive homes, a freebie, a total freebie for three years. The per-foot model basically takes the total amount of square feet, say, whatever it is, a million something, and it divides it into the 2.4, or in this case now, the 3 million. And basically, because I don't have the exact figures, it comes out to about 16.5 cents per square foot. So that, in terms of fairness, is the extreme of being fairness. And what the commission, what other people on the commission didn't understand, I was talking advalorm, and I, but I'm talking the methodology of advalorm. Advalorm takes the amount value of each home, and it's a fair system, because you pay, here's the tax rate that's needed to collect X amount of revenue, and it fairly distributes, but there's exception, you know, there's exceptions, the veterans and whatever, like we, one of the problems I found, obviously, was that, you know, we did not communicate. Putting two or three little sentences and writing on the water bill that no one can read, I can't read it unless I put my glasses on, is not going to inform people that there is a poverty scenario, that you can fill out a form. And in the first couple of years, the form was very hard to get, the website, they finally cleaned up the website, but there's a lot of people that, I have neighbors that don't have computers, so, you know, that's it. But to get back to the square foot model, the square foot model then takes, if you take the square foot model of 16 and a half cents per square foot, and I took the original chart that was presented, and at the, at the end, I basically took the average, the average size per each home in each category in the 11 tiers, and so what happens under that model? Under that model, less than 500 square feet pay $80 instead of $259. In the next tier, they pay $123 instead of $276. In the next tier, 1,000 to 1500, they pay $216 instead of 301. In the 15 tier, they pay $292 instead of 326. And of course, we get to the 2,000 tier, and that's where the break even is. So what's happening here, in the first system, in the first methodology, the lower, the smaller homes are supplementing the bigger homes. And like, the reason why I asked her to repeat it was, the bigger homes, if a bigger home catches on fire versus a 500 square foot one-by or a 1,000 foot one-by, you send one engine, 5,000 square foot house, you're gonna send two or three engines, whatever it takes, just as a comparison. And if you look at, if you look down, okay, the 5,000 square foot home is gonna pay $1,000. Well, I got news for you, they're paying, they're paying that in advalorm. This basically follows, in reality, the advalorm model, and this is a much fairer, much fairer, and it eliminates, what it does is eliminates the lower-income people that are living in a one-by into that base charge of $235, but revenue's the same. We're gonna get the $3 million, but revenue's the same, that's how we get there. So that is basically what I wanted to get over, being that I couldn't be at that meeting, and I think this was very important, that the council understand this scenario that's available. Now, at the meeting, at the meeting, the first meeting that the commission had, I presented this model, and the consultant said, oh, it's already valid, it's already being used by other towns, Hully being one of them, I don't know the, you know, that's the name that came up. So in terms of it being a proper use or in-use methodology, it is, it's legal, and it is the most fair methodology that you're going to find. So that's my two cents for today.
Okay, you're the vice chair, right, of this committee?
Yeah.
So that's why I let, in case anybody wants to know why I let him go longer than the buzzer, is because he's vice chair. So tell me why that didn't get voted in? What was the?
It was, it was equal, first of all, it wound up being two to two, okay? And so we're at a stagnant, you know, we're at a stagnant point. I mean, it just felt that, I said, okay, maybe I give in because there's next year, but, you know, I also understand that timeframe is important, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm finite, and I have to be realistic. So, you know, I could have put my heels in the sand and said, hey, you know, I'm gonna stagnate this, no, it's not the way, it's not the way I do, you know, do handle myself.
Yes, I certainly appreciate all the work, and what we're looking at now is what was voted in, right? And this is gonna have to, I mean, we can't go back and reassemble the committee, I'd like to stick with what has been presented because that was voted in, but it's a very interesting approach to the?
Well, it's not, you know, it's not my approach, it's used by other towns. I mean, it's, it was, I thought it was my approach three years ago, because when I presented it three years ago at the first commission, they shut me down, and they said, there's no way Jose. And I was fighting, I was fighting with a few people that are saying, small houses burn faster. Well, so what? Large houses burn too. So, you know, it was the, it was the thinking and the, you know, I mean, I've got a lot of experience in this. I mean, I was sat on tax commissions for Woodbridge, Connecticut, where I was paying, my house taxes were $13,000, and that's 35 years ago.
Does anybody have any questions for the vice chair real quick?
Well, I don't have questions, but I've got an observation. It didn't get voted in because it was a two-two tie, so it's coming to us at a two-two tie. Am I correct with that?
No, he switched his vote to, so it was three to one.
You switched the vote to a three to one?
Yeah, because I switched it. I switched it for the simple reason that we had to go forward this year.
Done.
But realistically, you would have been?
Yeah, I did not put my feet in the sand and say, hey, you know, this is, this is what it's gonna be. Thanks for that clarification. Now, going back, and this is what I would have expected, to be honest, I would have expected that the assessment would have followed a similar methodology that the advalorm does. I mean, this is totally acceptable, and that's why I was asking before, you know, I'm someone who's in the 1500 to 1999, is going up 20 something percent, and when in fact, it should be going down, or somewhat equal to what it was last year. So, you know, when it comes time for us to vote, my preference would be giving this chart, which is fair. We can support this chart to a resident to say, you're getting charged on a square foot basis, not some sort of convoluted methodology, which I know that has been tried and tested in court. So my preference would be to go ahead and pass the overall revenues that are needed, and then go back over the next couple of weeks and refine this so that it, again, it's fair, because that's what basically advalorm means. You know, fair, it's definitely, I hate to say more fair, but, or fair, but, you know, it, if you look at it and you understand what's happening, you know, as someone in the committee said, made a comment that, well, the other way is just better to get the revenue, well, there's the revenue, there's no better way, this is the better way, this is the fair way. So, you know, it's just, it followed through that, I mean, I had to eat birds, so to say, and, you know, because things have to get done, but, you know, I go home and I think about, you know, some of these people, and the other thing that happens in terms of, in terms of the per-square-foot value methodology, your poverty people sort of go away, because if, you don't have to go through all that, because I'm gonna say a large percentage of the people that qualify under the HUD definitely are probably gonna be happier paying $100 or, you know, $80 or $123 rather than $259 or $285, whatever it is, you know? So that's where the thought was, and personally, it doesn't affect me, obviously, but, you know, I do have neighbor, I do have four neighbors that I fill out the paperwork every year.
Appreciate that. Any other questions? I just have one, I think, you know, it's very impassioned plea, but we don't have the other side. I don't know if Mr. Dixon is on, who is the chair, that could explain how, because I'd love to hear before we change any, I'd love to hear the other side of why it was changed or not changed, because it's?
I'll make, I'll make one other comment. The breaking down to 11 tiers was one of the things that I pushed these forth for also, because it broke down, you know, that it broke it down, and it was, it made that system, that methodology, as fair as it can get.
I get it, I get it. And we have this consultant here, and this was considered along with what we have at the end, right? And there was a reasoning that the one that we are voting on was better than this one? That?
All these methodologies are accepted by courts at different times, so they were all options, and it was truly, at that point, up to the committee what they felt was more reflective of the benefits received.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, am I able to jump in?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for the invitation. Yes, I appreciate it, thanks for it. As the chair, yes, I believe the description that we just heard does provide some color. However, I'd like to add some of my own color. There were three meetings.
Yep.
We were not even to convene people who responded, saying they would show up, so that is an ad after time constraint. Part of the recommendation you see today, that we are putting before you as described, did come at vigorous debate. What I would like to describe is the fact that this recommendation moved forward with the consensus of the committee. That consensus came with the caveat of recommendations that are before you, two options. Make sure you evaluate the industrial side, make sure you expand tiers, or make sure you expand the economic hardship program. That's how those were formulated. I think what's also important to note is that the conversation also during our third meeting, where we came to this consensus that we would move forward to make this recommendation, outlined that it was, there would be significant challenges with the square foot model alone, because then you have the opportunity for residents to argue or dispute their square footage. These tiers bumped it out, so it was less of an administrative challenge, at least what we understood it at the time, for the city. Maybe that should be outside the scope, but it was a consideration that went in. I think the other part is, in the square footage model, there was a differentiator in tiers. And what I mean by, the largest population would be assessed less, and I believe that comment came up today, and that is true. However, during that conversation in our third meeting, we actually took the opportunity to say, hey, if we go with the tiers that are recommended before you today, it would align more proportionately. I think the definition of fair is obviously subjective, it's a legal one, and there's what we have. But when we left the third meeting, I think, again, there was a two-two decision originally. The decision to change, again, I believe came at the negotiation, navigation of ensuring that the two recommendations were before you, along with the fee schedule that you have today.
One thing is, the model we developed, to address that request, was per-square-foot, so it wasn't tiers, it was each home times that 16 cents. So that's what some of the concerns about, whether the square footage is accurate and so on. And it, and I think, I mean, there are jurisdictions that may, I personally don't know if anyone that does per-square-foot on the residential thing, but that doesn't mean it cannot be done, because it's been done on the commercial side. It's more common to have more like tiers and a set fee by tier, so that was another piece of information I shared with the group. But again, like I said in the beginning, multiple methodologies are accepted by courts, so it wasn't necessarily a matter of legal accuracy, just at that point.
The, the model where you're dividing, you know, the number of homes into the dollars, yes, that's probably wider used, but I don't think a lot of towns got to see the other, the other, the other models. And the per-square-foot model was not presented in 2022, and it came up when I, you know, in the first commission. And then, of course, I didn't know till this commission that, hey, it's being used in other towns. If it's being used in other towns, you know, we could find out how much, how much people protested, if they protested. I mean, a lot of people aren't gonna necessarily, let me put it this way, on the larger homes or 2,000 above, they're not gonna protest their size and have the appraiser come out and measure and find out there are another 100 or 200 square feet more. So, because that's common sense. So, but anyway, my thing, my point today was that there's another way of looking at this, and there's always next year, and, you know, one of the, you know, we did not have some of the people show up, we had, we had someone show up that was new to the committee, they were, you know, they were... we had someone show up that was new to the committee, they were, you know, they were, they were two meetings in, let's put it that way. What looks fair not necessarily is, and that was one of the votes that, you know, one of the votes going towards keeping this one.
Well, thank you very much, it was great input, appreciate all the hard work that you did on that. Do we have a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor, I got an additional question and this is more for transparency's sake. So, vice chair mentioned that you had attended a meeting. What was the role, what was, what was your role in meeting with the consultant and chief and, and the chairman? What was it that came out of that meeting?
Well, I don't ever remember meeting a consultant until just now and so I think that we may have false information.
That's, that's fine.
And my only meeting with them was at other meeting the other day when we were going through this at the city hall, just as you did.
So, yeah, some clarification?
So, Mayor, I, I think the council is referring to the meeting where the, was asked to have the consultant, the chairman, myself and you meet, so the consultant, because we had a no-show at our special, our fire assessment meeting and for you to understand the options that were being presented. It was in my office, or not my office, the conference room.
That was with us? I'm sorry.
She, she was not there, she was on, on the, on the computer.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, there, there you go. It was to understand the options that were going forward. I apologize for forgetting that, but...
You said you get a mo.
But anyway, we have a motion in a second. We'll go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember Carroll, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaines?
Aye.
Councilmember Fike?
Aye.
Councilmember Ratzek?
Nay.
Mayor Keel?
Aye.
So, passed, okay. We have any other public comment before we close the meeting? No. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The time is, or, yeah, 3:50.